Yeah, we might as well start.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Start with the pledge.
As you lead the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? The only thing that I would ask is, under other business, we just get an update on the demo of the Old Town Hall. Okay.
Second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma. All those in favor? All right. Public forums, where we have public comment from non-agenda items. There's nobody out on the, in, out here, but does anybody from the board have a public?
I only have a comment. Do you have Roger checking to see if the street light at the end of Selbert Drive is working? Because when I just drove in, it wasn't. And when I drove out. They come on, so.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have any other public comment? Okay. Next item is approval of minutes. The September 26, 2022. Motion by Phil, seconded by Tom. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
All abstain.
Velma abstains. Was not here. Motion carries. Committee and board reports. We don't have any. Next item is the manager's report. First item on the manager's report is status of open positions in the building.
Yes, just, just, you know, first, we hired two, two folks that will be working for us. One is a town clerk, Rachel Bowe. She's recently moved here from Connecticut. She has 14 years experience in municipal government in Connecticut, so.
Maybe not as specific to town clerk duties, but enough around assessing and billing and automobile collections that I think she'll do fine in picking up what needs to be done. The other person we hired was Sherry Shinard. She's from Waterboro. Sherry's the, the wife of Deputy Troy Shinard that used to be here in town. Sherry is a behavioralist, working for a variety of other mental health types of facilities over the years, and really wanted to change in, changing venue for her. So spent a little more time maybe with her family and not as have as much overall responsibility as she had in the past. So she's looking for a transition, and I think it'll fit well for, for us as well. So Sherry, because of her, she was the director of her facility, because of that, we thought that she'd just give a two-week notice, but she ended up giving a month's notice because of her position. And she'll be here November 1st instead of October 17th. So when they're both on board, I'll, I'll have them come in and meet with you. Or if you come in the office, feel free, we're trying to introduce them to everybody who walks in. So particularly Rachel's already here, and she's already started work. Just to give you a little idea, because, one of the things that I've been working on with the fire chief are modifications to the personnel policies to sort of blend in the uniqueness of the fire EMS folks that we have. They, they work a 24-hour shift. They're off two days. They come back, work another 24-hour shift, then they're off four days. So there's a uniqueness. They work a 84-hour work period, pay period, so 42 hours a week. So there's a, a blending that we have to do in terms of how we calculate their, their sick vacation, how it's calculated, along with some uniqueness in terms of how the service works. When shifts are changing, oftentimes, there's a 15-minute change one way or the other. So if your, if your per, if your shift person is there 15 minutes early, generally, we let, the fire service lets those folks go early. So, because somebody's there to take their shift. If not, they stay until the shift is over. And then if they're, if somebody hasn't come in, they may be held over until somebody gets there. So a little bit of uniqueness to it, but we'll be putting together a complete changes within the, within the policies in red. Then I'll bring them to you folks for further explanation and review as we work through it. So we're getting there. I'm into, I'm into the vacation leave and accumulation, accumulated leave now. And then we'll get into some other aspects of it. But generally, they'll all dovetail what we do with our other employees with, with some exceptions.
Our benefits. Will they be eligible for full-time benefits?
Yes, they all have the same benefits that every other employee has, and have those options available to them. Yep. The other thing that I provided to you was the preliminary state valuation report. I gave you the complete, complete thing. I, what they do is they sort of break it down, and they look at different aspects of it. But the, the main sheet on the front indicates that our certified ratio that they've determined was, is 86% as opposed to 88 the previous year. And then the sheets really start to break down based on maybe combined values as well as residential values and land values to give you an idea of what we, what property may have sold for and what we had it valued for. So generally, in the beginning of the sheet, we'll show you that, for instance, the first item on the combined study, it really is a 52% ratio, because we had it assessed at 169-1, and it sold for 326-5. So if you read that, it tells you what month it was sold, the sale year, what map and lot it's on. So if you ever wanted to track some of these, just to see where they are, the first one actually is on, right next to Champagne's, the back, the back road. Geez, I keep forgetting the name of it.
Old Post Road?
Old Post Road, yep. And it's an old ranch in there. So it's kind of funny to think that the old ranch sold for 326-5 when it came onto the market in March. So, but I think the other reason I provided it to you is that I think we, and I'll, starting to have conversations with the assessors, that we need to start looking at these data and then come up with a plan as to specifically how we wish to proceed in terms of balancing out our value. I don't think we're there yet to that, you know, we're not into the 75 to 70% sales ratio yet. We're at 86. It dropped again. We were, when I first got here, was it seven or eight years ago, we were hovering around 100, and it stayed at 100 for a while. Now it's starting to ratchet down. And I'm sort of wanted to play a waiting game to see what it's going to have with the real estate market now that we've had adjustment in interest rates as a, as a, as a result of the inflation that we're experiencing, and how that's going to affect. So I'll continue to have some discussions with Beth, and we'll see if we can perhaps come up with a plan, whether it's a, I, I'm still of the opinion, unless I can be proven elsewhere, ways, that our value or our data that we have in our tax rolls is pretty, pretty good value of data, in that when properties get built upon, or they're getting new additions, we, the assessor and the code officer always are out there looking at this and making sure that we have a proper amount of value on it. So I, I really feel that our property record cards, the data that's there, may be very good data, in that we may be able to avoid a full-blown revaluation as opposed to maybe statistical update based on the value that we have. Essentially, I mean, obviously, we're going to look at every card again and make those adjustments. And basically, what they do is they adjust the, the codes that they use in order to bring those values into play. So further discussions with her. We'll come up with a plan and try to get it to you to, to make some decisions upon. But something that we, that's on my radar, we're still going to continue to look at it.
I'm surprised that, you know, the last couple of years, the way everything has exploded, that we're really only at 86%, you know, especially, I mean, it doesn't affect anything new built, but this is just affected by people selling their homes, right? So that affects our percentage.
That, and then, you know, obviously, you've got, you've got property that comes on at the condominiums. If you look at the condos, I mean, that's always a, a tough one. We have them valued basically somewhere between the 200 and, I think it's like 260 to 280. Maybe, maybe some at 233, but the selling prices are still pretty substantial, well over $300,000 in some aspects. So there has to be some adjustments there based on that. But I'm still, I mean, the other day, I saw a condo that was up in the cottages that was for sale, and it was selling for 429.9. And when those properties came on, when they first started, they were at 225, 215, 225. So really, a lot of increase in value there. So.
But that'll certainly affect our ratio and, and.
Yeah, right now, they're, they're saying the combined, the condominium ratio is really at 80% based on their, their analysis that the state did when they came down and looked at our cards. So. So the, the sheets will show you that stuff.
There probably hasn't been a whole lot of turnover on those condos, though, right?
I don't think so.
Right.
I don't think there's been a lot, yeah, anyway. But there probably will be at some point. And I'm, you know, it's funny, I thought for sure, based on Hurricane Ian, that we would get another influx of folks that, snowbirds that perhaps live here in Arundel and live in Fort Myers during the wintertime, that were looking for some forgiveness to stay here, but have had nobody approach us in terms of any discussions along those lines. So.
Very good. Okay, move on to the business part of the agenda.
Yeah, I provided to you the, the tri-party agreement and provided a memo that I dated back in September as to this process and, and how it works. Essentially, the tri-party agreement is an agreement between MDOT, the cottages, and the town to ensure that the infrastructure upgrades that have to be done to the Route 1 corridor in front of the cottages gets completed. And if it does not get completed, that we have the ability to access the escrow funds that will be in the bank, that would be withdrawn and paid to whatever contractor is, is doing the work. If, if the cottages fail to perform that work, and I'll perform, pay those bills. We have a tri-party agreement or a party agreement with them now for the work inside the cottages. So any of the infrastructure that's going in, that Grandin gets paid for, it gets reviewed by engineers from the cottages, our engineer, and Grandin's. And then there's an agreement as to, all the engineers sign off on that to ensure that that work is completed. Usually, Grandin will, their engineering firm will provide us photographs, work that's been done, how it's been done. And then all engineers sign off on it. Then they ask all the towns, the, the town and the cottages and Grandin to sign off on it as well. Then they release the funds. Typically, that's what's going to happen with this tri-party agreement. We, I think we know already that the million dollars in this agreement that's going to go into this, if we, if you folks give us the ability to sign tonight, is probably not enough to do the project. So once it gets signed, they will have engineers come in, finish up the work to determine what the overall value is. And then in addition to the million, there'll be more money put into that account in the event that we have to go in and fix this or, or finish it off. So, so really, what I'd be seeking, hopefully you've had a chance to perhaps look at it. It's been exhaustively looked at, both all attorneys and parties to be. I added a few other things in there that, that obviously weren't there before in the original agreement, that obviously, we're going to follow main laws. That was put in as item nine on the agreement. And item eight, that any, any cost associated with the town will be paid for by the developer of this project. I think it's a good document. It's been signed, reviewed by everybody, and I would seek your approval to sign on behalf of the town.
Is there a description of the work that needs to be completed?
The whole, the whole Route 1, there has to be, there's a, there's a document or a, there's a plan that's already been done. I can provide you the plan. But essentially, there'll be a turning lane put in with an island. So there'll be flow of traffic, plus to be able to, people be able to turn, get into a middle lane so they can turn left, or have the flow of the traffic go by. So there'll be a widening of Route 1 in front of the entrance to the cottages to accommodate that. No signals, as I understand, will be placed. I believe the frequency of activity there doesn't warrant that at this point. So.
So there's going to be a heading south, there's going to be a turning lane, and then heading north, there's going to be a middle lane with an island?
Right. There'll be a, there should be a split. If I looked at the record correctly, there should be some sort of split. So there'd be some sort of concrete or something in the middle to differentiate between where you turn and where you don't turn.
Oh, we don't allow that, right?
No.
State allows that one, so they can. Yeah, it says it, says this amount may be adjusted by subsequent engineer's estimate or actual contractor's price, as approved by the town and/or MDOT. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to. Looking for a motion to allow the town manager to sign this on behalf of the town. Motion by Jason, seconded by Phil. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Next, we'd like to appoint Simone as the warden for the election on November 8. I have the document here that I'll send down. So approval?
Yeah, motion to approve Simone as warden for November 8 election.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Velma. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Next, we have a request for the modification of the business hours for voter registration. Typically, we've done this all the years that I've been here, that provides the option that the registration, voter registration will be during the normal business hours of the town.
Every year, so I make a motion.
Yep. Okay. Motion by Velma, seconded by Jason to adjust the business hours for voter registration. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
And I also have a special town meeting warrant for November 8 to cover the charter amendments. I have three original copies. I'd like to have you sign all three on behalf of the clerk.
We made sure that we've got everything covered, right?
We've double-checked it, triple-checked it. Hopefully, it's all there.
All right. I need a motion to sign the special town meeting warrant. Motion by Jason, seconded by Tom. Tom beat you by a millisecond. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
Yeah, there's three there.
Three, three of them, yep. You want today's date on here?
Yes, please.
And put the date on that. Today is the.
11.
11th, October 11th. Yep. Yep. Whoopsie. Just put arrows.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the account payable warrant. Motion by Jason, seconded by Phil. No discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries. Other business. Any update on demo for the Old Town Hall?
Yeah. Scott Hebert from Dearborn will be here either tomorrow or the day after to meet with Roger to set, set up a plan of demo of the building and put it on their schedule accordingly. I wanted Roger to be there simply because, once the building comes down, I really don't want that cellar hole to be exposed for very long. So we'll get that coordinated with Public Works to make sure. And we spoke today about proper fencing around once the building's down until we get it filled in and, and so forth. So that should be moving quite quickly. Once the bill, I don't think it's going to take more than a, probably a day to take that building down. So.
Knock my corner.
Yeah. It'll come down, and then it'll be a matter of falling away. While I have you, found out today that on Thursday, the playground equipment will be delivered. We're going to store it behind the shed right now, because they'll deliver here. We'll cover it and wrap it. And then this fall, as, as the weather gets a little colder, Roger will go in and prep the area for the, for the playground equipment. So we should see some activity there. Once it's prepped, I believe that we've contracted, I'll have to reconfirm with, with the recreation director.
Jen.
Yeah, with Jen. But I believe that they're going to come in and set it up. The contractor will, will put people on board, on here to set it up, and we don't have to do any of that effort. So.
Is that going to happen this year, or will that happen in the spring?
I think they're delivering it, and I think we're going to do it this fall. Yeah, get it up and get it done. Yeah, that's the plan. So.
Awesome.
Our, just a couple other things. Our large dump truck, 10-wheel dump truck down in New Hampshire is still in pieces. The company's waiting for parts from MAC. Roger and I talked about that again today, the importance of trying to get it back. So, but he's got a, he's got a plan. He knows what he's going to do in the event that it's not back, been put back together by the time the bad weather hits. So we're working on that. The two vehicles that we got for nothing from the school department, one is all set, ready to go on the road. It was a 2009 Ford F350 with 28,000 miles on it. So we put a new rack body on it, which I think he paid last payroll, and a stainless steel hopper, stainless steel sander that was given to us as well, that was put on it. So that's ready to go. The pickup truck that they, it's a one-ton pickup truck. We're thinking about holding off, and that will eventually maybe retire some of the old 80 iron that we have, the half-ton pickup that Roger rides around in. We'll, we'll put that one in service. And then we just got word that, that the school wanted to get rid of a John Deere 4330 tractor. So we went over and took a look at it. It's in pretty, pretty good shape. So we've told them we're really interested in it, but they have to send it out to the other municipalities, Kenny, Kennyburgport, to see if there's any interest in it. But we believe that's going to be one of those things that will come our way with not many, not much of anything financially invested in it. From what we can gather, it has a, it has a bucket on the front, and it has a snow blower that goes on that is run off the PTO, but it, but it sets on the front. So the, it runs all the way back to the PTO. Our thoughts were that we could utilize that track, because it has summer turf tires on it, that we could use it as a mower on the eastern trail. We'll put a belly mower on it and mow the trail when we need to, as opposed to using something else on that. So we'll have a use for it if we're able to get it. But I guess the hydraulic lines were just bad and need to be replaced. So I'll keep you apprised of that. I think that's the other thing that I can chat about. I got, I'm working through that now. The owners of 159 Proctor Road provided me three photographs today of the inside of the building, completely cleaned. So, yep. The upstairs was cleaned. I didn't, they didn't have any photographs of the bathroom, but I'll ask for some more photographs. But the dining room, there's a dining room completely cleaned with a, with a dining room table in the middle and four chairs. And the observer, looking at the, looking at the photographs, I don't see that the, the floors are doing this. The floors seem to pretty, pretty straight. So I'm still looking to try to get a engineer in there to take a look at it and give us an assessment of it. But at least we got some photographs, which is a good thing. We didn't have until now. So. At least we got some photographs, which is a good thing. We didn't have until now, so.
You know, you probably haven't seen if the outside, anything around the outside's been cleaned up.
I observed the outside today. It, it looks pretty much as it hasn't. There might be some things that got picked up, some metal goods, but. Generally speaking, it's about the same. There's a bunch of vehicles there and.
Keith, are they, because they're beyond the deadline, are they? Are they required to go through that whole appeal process to make the, to, to prevent demolition or is that something that can be handled? Between parties and?
I, I think, I think we have. Though I don't like to express it that way, I think we have the advantage, the. Upper hand in terms of how this moves forward. I'm more inclined to that now that they've given me some photographs to. Give them the benefit of the doubt to take a look at the property before we actually. Exercise any. Any authority over it.
Oh, definitely, yeah. I would agree with that.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I think we, we don't have to exercise that order if we don't want to.
I don't know if our hands were tied because of, you know, the finding of facts and all the.
Yeah, I have some concerns about whether we don't take action as where it's already directed, whether in fact we avoid that.
Right.
Start the process all over.
Right.
Want to ask counsel.
Yeah.
What he thinks about that.
Okay. Yeah, that would be the only thing that if we, if we did. That we may lose that advantage. It did not get completely filled. We removed it. They indicated to us that they were done with it. So what the, if that means that they took everything out of the building and then photographed. Not sure because we haven't seen inside, so. Hopefully we'll get some more photographs and maybe get an invite so we can go over and take a look.
Check the wiring and everything else, so.
Yeah.
See how safe the building is.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of anything else. I think that's about.
Thank you.
About it.
What do you got? Any other business they'd like to bring up?
Yeah, just one small thing. Would it be possible maybe through the winter months to. As a group begin to brainstorm about, you know, it sounds like the sewer is. Is a, has been, you know, maybe, maybe brainstorm as a group to see if we can't come up with some. You know, proactive ideas about what to do with the TIF money and maybe business-friendly stuff or however we want to go with this. And I don't know if we want to invite some of the public or, I don't know. I'm sure Jack Reitz would like to throw his two cents in on it.
Yeah, I, we could, we could set it up as a public hearing to gather information after, maybe we want to meet first. And then maybe have a public hearing.
It seems like, I don't know.
Correct.
All right, that, I was going to say, we need to find out how, how wide we can go with the money.
Well, I'll have to ask counsel because there is some things that have been specified in the TIF agreement. And I don't know how inclined they are. So we can find out about that, but.
Yeah, I don't go down Route One a lot, but it seems like all of a sudden that like everything, all the properties for sale on Route One now. I don't know if it's selling or I.
Well, there's a, there's, the planning board's dealing with a large storage facility on the north end of the town. I think it's like two or three stories tall. Somebody wants to put in a big storage. You know, facility out there, so. I think so, yep. Indoor. It looks pretty nice from the, from the drawings that I saw today, but that's still preliminary at this point, but. Yeah, I think you, you, yeah, there is some activity out there, but. In terms of, I, I sent a draft application for business. Business applications to go on the website. I sent that to John. I haven't heard back from him and hopefully by your next meeting, we may have some sort of. Application set up. As to how we want to administer that moving forward. I looked at our personal property. We, he said we had a hundred and fifty registered businesses, but according to our personal property, we have a hundred. So we're writing that, you know, there may be a few that aren't. Registered with us or are not paying personal property taxes on their business or whatnot, so. But there's a hundred that I know of.
Anything more on the Brimstone intersection?
No. No, I haven't. Forgive me, I have not looked into it.
We're really just waiting for spectrum, right?
That is correct.
Spectrum, spectrum, Verizon.
Yeah, spectrum.
Be sure to make sure you send you their bill. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Slow down.
You're done.
Motion by Jason, seven thirty-four PM to adjourn. Do I hear a second? Second by Phil. All those in favor? Motion carries.